Urban City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in these council chambers. We pray for thy divine guidance, that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzall.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Present.
Mrs. Hannahhan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have the minutes of the October 8th, 2019 meeting. They were previously distributed by email. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I move to approve the minutes as of right.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzall. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say thank you to my colleagues who did excuse my absence at that last regular meeting. I did get a chance to watch that meeting and the committee meeting beforehand, so I feel informed, but will be abstaining from the vote.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to accept the minutes of the previous meeting. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzall.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Abstain.
Mrs. Hannahhan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
A vote of five to nothing and one abstention, the motion passes. We do have requests to address council, but none of them are on agenda items, so we will deal with those a little bit later on. We'll move on to the report from the Community Engagement and Economic Development Committee. Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. To the Honorable Counsel of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Committee of Economic Development and Community Engagement, to whom was referred CRA commercial application for 4557 Montgomery Road and 2087 Sherman Avenue, beg leave to submit the following report. Ventura Commons LLC presented an overview of the business proposal for 4557 Montgomery Road and 2087 Sherman Avenue. The Committee recommends we solicit additional questions from council during discussion and reconsider a final agreement on 11/7/19 at our next scheduled committee meeting. Respectfully submitted, Leslie Stevenson, Chairperson, James Bonzall, and Eric Thompson.
Mr. Sankar?
I recommend that the committed report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. We've asked and invited Mr. Pete Ventura Jr. to come and provide a snippet of an overview to the whole of council. This project was just presented for the first time in committee and given the desire to move it forward at our next regular council meeting. I would like for him to come and share a brief overview, but also would ask that members of council who weren't at the committee meeting offer any feedback or questions they'd like for us to address in between now and the next council meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Ventura, would you like to come forward? If you can come up to the microphone here at the podium. You just want him to give a brief overview, or do you have questions?
Yes, if you could provide a brief overview. I know not all members of council were present at the committee meeting, and I don't believe they all watched it just now, since they were probably on their way to this meeting. So if you could, for those who maybe have not heard of the project, just provide a brief overview of what it is and what it is that this CRA is attempting to accomplish.
Sure. Myself and my wife, who are owners in the Ventura Builders Group, we bought the old Fidelity Bank building right down there on the corner of Sherman and Montgomery. So our plan is to renovate the entire building. We're going to put like an event venue space on the first floor for banquets or whatever. We think it could hold a few hundred people in there. And then our plan is to white box the rest of the building to get it ready for future office tenants, hopefully. So kind of do the project in a couple phases. Get the first floor up and running first, and then hopefully start signing office clients once that space is ready as well. So we're hoping to get this going in the next couple months and get it done as soon as we can.
And can you speak to the investment that you'll be making?
Yeah, in total, I believe we had on there, it's about 2.3 million into the building. So that'll be split between all the floors. But we think it could create upwards of 60 or 70 jobs in the building, hopefully. And then a lot of indirect jobs as well through the banquet space. You're going to be hiring a lot of outside contractors that'll be coming, working in Norwood, as well as the builders of the project as well.
Questions, comments? Mr. Sankar?
Yep. As far as office facilities, will they be on the second and third floor or right above the banquet hall? Is that... Yeah, so on the second and third floor of that, there's kind of two buildings in one there. So on the front building, those are like 5,000 square foot floor plans, so you can do that on the second and third floor. And then I think it's around 1,300 square foot floor plans on the back seven-story building. You can't really use the top story, but we plan on renting out the other five stories as well. So you know, I think there could be a mix of clients in there. We think it'll be, we hope it's going to be Class A space in there, so we want office, you know, nice jobs in there. It's not going to be manufacturing or anything like that. So we hope it'll attract a nice clientele to the center of Norwood there, people want to have their businesses.
Thank you. Mrs. Hannah?
Hi, thank you. I'm glad to see something's being done with this building. It's a great building. Could you give me a little information? Is the banquet hall going to be open to the public, or is it for private business?
Yeah, it'll be open to the public. I foresee it being mostly weddings and event type. You know, I think it's going to be a nicer space as well with what we're putting into it. So yeah, I think it'll be for nicer events. We would still like to rent it out. I mean, it will be open to the public as well, and we'd like to get it for some daytime events, if there's stuff locally, or if there's showers, or whatever it is. But we think the majority of events will probably be in the evening with some daytime events mixed in. But it'll have a website and everything. People can go on there and see the pricing and rent it, just like you would any other kind of event venue space.
That is so needed in Norwood. We don't have anything like that around here, so...
That's good to hear. That's what we're hoping for. And yeah, there's really not, and there's a lot of action around here, too. It's centrally located. We think it'd be a good spot. You don't have to drive all the way into northern Kentucky or anywhere. I mean, you can get to Norwood anywhere in 20 minutes in the city. So we think it will be a good spot. It's kind of a cool thing in the space, too. It's kind of a novelty being the old bank, and we're going to keep the old vault in the space and kind of dress it up and make it look nice. So we're going to kind of pull back some of the history into the building as well. So I think it'd be a neat space rather than just being in a regular, you know, venue space.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Mr. Sankar, did you have a follow-up question?
No, I found my answer. I was just going to ask if the old elevator was going to be used in there. Yeah, there's two elevators in there, but yeah, we are going to get them both up and running. But yeah, one is really old in there. It's not a normal size either, so we're having to work with that, but yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say thank you for coming and to the committee meeting, but also being available to answer any questions. We will be entertaining this revision to the CRA agreement at the November 7th meeting, which the time is to be determined. We'll check in with all those committee members, but thank you for being here today to make us all aware of the project, and we'll get back with a final report out soon.
No, thank you for having me out and hearing me. I want to say that it has been nice dealing with folks in Norwood, and just about everybody on council's reached out to me. I've had good interactions with the mayor, Joe Gears. Everybody's been really pushing the project forward, so just want to say thank you as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to receive or file the committee report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzall.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hannahhan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit A, Addendum Number 01570710, to Services Agreement Number 01570659, between Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC and the City of Norwood, authorized by Ordinance Number 5-2019, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit A, Addendum Number 01570710, to Services Agreement Number 01570659, between Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC and the City of Norwood, authorized by Ordinance Number 5-2019, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit A, Addendum Number 01570710, to Services Agreement Number 01570659, between Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC and the City of Norwood, authorized by Ordinance Number 5-2019, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzall?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzall.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hannahhan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to introductory readings of ordinances. There was an email between Mr. Brown and Anna Mary Thomas, and the financial advisors have reviewed this as long as this is just a slight increase, maybe $115 a month, and as long as it's still cheaper than it was in the past years. And so as long as council continues to appropriate into the future, which is in our financial recovery plan, they have no problem with this. So just, I make that announcement before we consider. An ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to sign Exhibit A, Addendum Number 01570710, to Services Agreement Number 01570659, between Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC and the City of Norwood, authorized by Ordinance Number 5-2019, and declaring an My understanding is that the current server is not sufficient enough to, they need additional firewalls on the server, and this is what's causing the increase in the price. Mr. Bonzall?
Thank you, Madam President. And from my understanding, this is something that they need quicker than, they really need us to take action tonight, so I am going to move that we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Sankar. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzall.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hannahhan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Please have all three readings.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit A, Addendum Number 01570710, to Services Agreement Number 01570659, between Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC and the City of Norwood, authorized by Ordinance Number 5-2019, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit A, Addendum Number 01570710, to Services Agreement Number 01570659, between Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC and the City of Norwood, authorized by Ordinance Number 5-2019, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to sign Exhibit A, Addendum Number 01570710, to Services Agreement Number 01570659, between Cincinnati Bell Telephone Company, LLC and the City of Norwood, authorized by Ordinance Number 5-2019, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Bonzall?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzall.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hannahhan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports, so we'll move on to other requests to address council. The first is Mary Miller. Are you, Angela, are you coming up at the same time? Come on, both of you up then. Mary Miller and Angela Pansella speaking about an update to Norwood Together. If you'll, yeah, come on up to the microphone here, and if you'll give us your names and addresses, and you'll have five minutes to address council.
My name is Angela Pansella. I live at 4409 Franklin Avenue, Apartment 1.
And my name is Mary C. Miller, and I live at 1845 Hopkins Avenue. And we just wanted to talk to you a little bit about what's going on with Norwood Together. As you know, Norwood, you may know, Norwood Together is the new name for the Norwood Quality of Life Implementation Team, and so we wanted to keep you up to date on what's going on. There's a lot of events that are listed in the flyer that we just sent out to you, but also we have a lot of things going on behind the scenes. For those of you who don't know, we now have an office in the CBI offices at Xavier, which is kind of nice. So we have a place to call our own. We have reserved our name, Norwood Together, with the state of Ohio, and we've applied for 501(c)(3) status in hopes, well, we're working on that. We're not there yet. We've sent the paperwork in, the first set of paperwork. We're also working on bylaws, and what you have there is a portion of monthly email newsletter, which will be going out to any of the people who've signed up for that. We've been trying to set up tables at, we set up a table at the market, we set up a table at the historic home tour, and we're setting up a table at the Gym of the Highlands 5K, and just want people to know what's going on all over the city. We plan to roll out a website after the holidays, and we do have a Facebook page now, so look for that and like it. We'd like to have you guys all on there. I do have a community meeting coming up on November 6th, and it will be at Xavier in the Circamp Family Meeting Rooms in the Alumni Building. So everyone in the community is invited. We're calling those community meetings, so anyone who wants to come. And as you know, we'll be working on our main project areas, which are economic development, infrastructure, community engagement, inclusion, and perception. So that meeting will be November 6th at 6:30, and you guys are all invited. We also have some strategic planning meetings scheduled for the co-chairs and the team, where we'll be working on our mission, our core values, our guiding principles, and also doing a three-to-five-year strategic plan. So that's coming up in November as well, and would you like to add anything? All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mary C., and Angela, for coming to share this update. This is pretty exciting. Do people need to RSVP for November 6th?
She has to, we need to RSVP. It's not necessary. It's certainly helpful, especially on the Facebook event page that is out. That helps us get a count of how many chairs are needed. So yes, just look up Norwood Together on Facebook and look for that event, and you can sign up for it.
But if you don't, you can show up. Yes, ma'am.
So just a follow-up to that, where should people park?
There's a big parking lot at the Alumni Building, and there should be plenty of room for everyone, and since it's in the evening, that should not be a problem.
Okay, so anywhere in the Alumni?
Anywhere in the normal parking lot for the Alumni Building. And you guys know where that is, the old Coke factory?
It's the address.
It's on the map. The address is here, and there's a map showing you where it's located on the front of the flyer.
It's opposite the admissions office?
Yep.
Up on the hill?
Yes.
And there's separate parking, a lot of them.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's a good space. I've been there. Just want to make sure folks know what to do, take advantage of the opportunity. I do have one more question. No, it's a community meeting, and it's economic development. Are businesses specifically being invited? Has the chamber been invited?
For this meeting? No, but anyone who wants to come is welcome to come. This is, the Economic Development Group is working on specifically like the types of businesses they'd like to see in Norwood. There's some other things that we're working on kind of in the background, but mostly that's what they're talking about right now, and how to promote businesses that are in our city, how to encourage people to visit them. Those are the two goals that they're mainly addressing. But if there are businesses, I know Mr. DeLuca's been there a couple times. If there's anyone else, anybody else that has a business?
I'm sure.
Yeah, are welcome to come and give their input to the committee. That would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bonzall?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just want to say one, you know, just reading through this list of accomplishments here, and actually, not everything you all have done is on here, but a lot of things are. And just want to say congratulations since February, that launch. It just seems like so much has happened, so, and so much even happened before that, but of course, February is when it really, you introduced yourself to the world, and there's been a lot of great things happen. So, long story short, thank you for that. Thank you for coming here tonight to give us updates. Now, just encourage, I think you all said you all are, but come back and please give us some regular updates as things change and things happen, because it's really exciting, the work that's getting done. So really appreciate all the volunteers and everybody else that's working on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzall. Any other comments, questions? All right. Thank you, ladies. Next, we have Dana Bowle. And if you will give a sure name and address, then you'll have five minutes to address council.
Dana Bowle, 3947 Elsmere. I'm speaking on behalf of Keep Norwood Cool, and as you know, I'm interested in preventing heat islands, among other things. Recently, while driving on forest just north of the railroad at Harris Avenue, I was shocked to see that the developer had scraped off the lot, not only over the previous Harris Avenue street surface, but beyond the over 50 feet to the chain-link fence at the Norwood lateral, which had previously been green space. The developer came and presented basically nothing to Ms. Stevenson's committee on April 4th. And while the street had been rendered useless and vacated for Zumbill, a longtime and trusted Norwood employer, I had assumed that the pedestrian right-of-way and the green perimeter would be maintained for citizens, perhaps to bike or walk to Wesley and the central business district. The property seized represents two blocks by at least 50 feet. This is ample room to create a green perimeter and a walk-bike trail, and I maintain that this needs to be advocated immediately by city officials. The developer claimed that employers and employees desire the ability to walk to restaurants. How exactly is that, can that happen? It is the Economic Development Committee's job to ask these questions. How is eliminating foot access on Harris to the large public pool, the rec center, and the nice and underutilized running track, not to mention the new basketball hoops, an economic win for Norwood? The area north of the lateral has suffered due to being cut off by the lateral and also the railroad underpass, which is very adverse to bikes and pedestrians. Both feel and are hazardous. The solution is to travel to Montgomery Road by way of Norwood Avenue, which is also treacherous and out of the way. As a former resident of both Harris and Harper, I know this firsthand. We already own the property, but why are we giving it up to create an even more problematic disadvantaged area where property values are stagnant? Tell us how this is building community or bringing Norwood together. Opposite the Zumbill property on Norwood Avenue, we host the entrance-exit ramps for westbound 562 traffic. We had previously planted trees on that site, realizing this is a unique gateway to and from Norwood and acts as an introduction. The whole area is an entrance to our city. Keep Norwood Cool proposes maintaining the right-of-way as a green perimeter to connect the Harris Avenue neighborhood and north Norwood to Wesley, that the developer sponsors a 30-year plan for the gateway, funding replacement trees and the Harris Avenue bike connector, which is professionally designed with community input. The setback for the property is similar to the Zumbill building, and that there is no additional parking pad. A garage must be built, which is aesthetically appropriate. No heat island on this property. All future proposals show visually what the property will look like from the street, from the hillside, and from the lateral, so that citizens may make informed decisions. Thank you for considering these issues and remediations.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Hannah?
Thank you, Madam President. Have you been to the building department to see what plans they have on file?
I have not. I was just shocked the other day, and the telephone poles are still in place, and it's completely blocked off to citizens. You know, I guess because they have heavy machinery running around, but I was, I mean, I guess I thought that by now we would have some kind of input.
I know that in speaking with the mayor about this previously, this council has taken no action to vacate that street whatsoever. The developer wanted to take out the street and the parking lot across the street as a means to potentially entice someone to the site. My understanding is that the mayor and the Safety Service Director told them they could do that, but if the building were not to be developed, they had to take that site back to its existing, when it was previous to that. That's my understanding. Is that your understanding, Mr. Bonzall?
It is. Yeah, the city at any time can tell them.
Can tell them.
It's been a year. I think our original agreement was a year, and I think that was August 2018 or somewhere around that. So we can at some point, but I mean, we're not, I don't think right now there's a reason to...
We haven't vacated anything.
Right, yes. Yeah, it does still own, but I mean, your concerns definitely do have some legitimate concerns.
I mean, everybody, look at all the people that came out for Wason Way, and this site is actually bigger than the Wason Way project, I think. Our section, possibly.
Gotcha, yeah.
You know, the width of it. So, and we're just going to give it away when we already have a problem with access? The problem with the underpass is if you're in the street, it's steep, and there's no room for a bike. On the sidewalk, also same thing, but it's like this wide, and you cannot see somebody else coming the other way. At night, you definitely don't want to be in there. So I think that we could do something really cool with all these different organizations. We just have to say, this is what we want, developer, make it happen. Like I said, how are they going to walk to restaurants? How's somebody going to get to Frish's?
Well, again, as I said, nope.
Or whatever the new reincarnated Bluebird is going to be. So, and I don't mean to be quite so intense here, but I actually lost sleep over that, so.
Well, again, I just want to reiterate that we, council has, this legislative body has not done anything. The city still owns that. We still have the right-of-way.
Well, then, why don't we have some like cool uprising on what we want to do there, people?
Well, and I don't know that the developer has had any, I don't, I am not aware of any plans that have been submitted, so we're just really kind of on hold.
My point about the sightlines of whatever visual we get to see is that you have to remember that there are people that live on the hillside. I used to look at Zumbill, and you know, I thought it was kind of a cool building, and the view and everything, and all that entire hillside neighborhood is going to have to look whatever's there. And same with people driving, and so, you know, they have 3D modeling programs, and they can do that for us.
There've been renderings of what they hope to have there. Be happy to share those with you, but I don't know how realistic they are.
Okay.
But I'll be happy to share them with you.
Okay.
And I'll just make one note, too.
Okay, any kind of truth bombs, like I'm happy to lay it on me.
The site does have a planned Dina development district overlay on it, so basically, anything that gets approved, like any major plans, go through the Planning Commission, and then council will approve some of those plans if there are major revisions to them. So there will definitely be time for public, there'll be public hearings and such, and hopefully, when there is some movement, and I don't know if there'll be movement before the next mayor takes over, but I mean, I would encourage, when there is movement, it'll all be, like I said, have to be sight, you know, publicly displayed with the planning commission agenda. You can also get those agendas, too, by emailing Carrie Town. So, email the, just NBD@norwoodOhio.gov. NBD, and they'll, you can just add her to be on their sunshine list, and they can add she to it.
And for people that are new to the area, you used to be able to, on the eastbound lane, on the eastbound lateral, when you exited, you were able to drive right onto Harris, and that went away because of concerns about rush hour traffic to and from all these new businesses. But I think we need to push back so that there's some way.
That was a state of Ohio thing. That was ODOT's decree.
Get some ideas out going out there.
Ms. Stevenson, did you have a comment? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I do have several. Ms. Bowles, thanks for coming. I really appreciate you raising this. Since you specifically laid me in your letter, I want to make sure I respond. On April 4th, we not only did have a presentation, but we actually started talking about developing a negotiating committee for the exact purpose of having stakeholders in Norwood be able to provide input on all development that's requesting a CRA agreement. That is a drafted ordinance that would actually change the process, and our committee will be further considering that on November 7th. I hope you'll come back. I hope that Keep Norwood Cool would be open to being a part of that process. There's nothing more frustrating than not knowing what's going on where you live. So, I do want you to be aware of that. Secondly, when the developer talked about walkability, they did have an indication of the walking path that they intended to build out, and so, there are presentation materials where that could likely be reviewed. I also wanted to just underscore what Mr. Bonzel shared, that the law department is pretty savvy in developing what's called clawback agreements, and so, if the developer does not hold up their part of the deal specific with this project, there is a clause that talks about restoring the property, and so, I wanted to ask if Mr. Moore had any recollection that he wanted to speak to with regard to that.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, that's what's in the agreement, the temporary easement agreement that council passed, the city approved, was to allow them to tear up the street and get the pad ready. The idea being to build some office space there once they had potential tenants. I don't remember the timeline on how long they had or where we are in the timeline as far as making them put everything back the way they found it. I will say this about this project, this one, as Mr. Bonzel mentioned, is a PUD. We also have a lot of leverage because we own a big chunk of the land, and so, hey, if you want to use the land, guess what? Yeah, I mean, there's more leverage, but I would, I would say this to, I would say, I would say this to Ms. Bowles, and I would say this to everybody else that has ideas like this. Having sat in the seat that looks, that goes through redevelopment agreements and PUD plans and all the rest of that, there are projects that happened and things happened, you know, that never, somebody, it never occurred to me, because nobody brought it up to me. We have, the people on, most of the people in council, most of the people running for council, they're not planners, they're not architects, they're not, I mean, you know what I mean, that there's a lot of skills, there's a lot of visions that people have. So, when, if anybody sees a, hey, council's going to be looking at this plan for this project, or the planning commission's looking at these bigger plans for these bigger projects, if you've got a thought, share it, because it's something that may not occur to the five, or six, or seven, or four, depending on the committee or the, what group it is, that may not occur to them. And so, things like the walk, to be honest, for me, the, like, the Tarex thing, the idea that we need a green walking path that's not at the highest in the thing that I would be thinking of. I'm not, I'm not the person voting on them anymore, but that's the kind of thing that, when those come up, send a letter or come to the meeting and let, let the people sitting in these chairs know, because there's a good chance it didn't occur to them. So, I'm glad you came forward.
Thank you for being.
But I don't remember the exact where we are in the Tarex easement.
I think it's just a huge opportunity, and everybody's like ready, they just love to participate in creating it, from what I've seen from the charrette. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We will move on to unfinished business. Just have a couple of things to report on to you. The Safe Rats to School grant had some additional money left over, and we had asked the Ohio Department of Transportation to put those flashing beacons up around Norwood View Elementary School on Carthage. I am happy to report that those have finally been put up. They will be, they were working today, but they were going to come back and program them tomorrow. So, very happy that that is finally completed for those folks up at Norwood View School. And then, just a reminder that the basketball hoops will be beginning to be installed next Monday, October the 28th. We, the oops people, the call before you did, will be down there this week marking out the utilities, but come Monday, the fence will be rolled back, and Borgman Athletics will be taking out the old posts and eventually installing the new ones. So, those are just two updates that I wanted to share with you. Is there any other unfinished business? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just wanted to talk about the Burrwood Park play equipment. I've had an extremely positive response with this equipment and what's going on down there. Everybody, or most people, I should say, seem very happy with what's going on. I know that Dream Burrwood, or the name, whatever, the group had a very good turnout and put in suggestions for future work. I again want to, oh, and just want to say that I did meet with the Norwood Fire Association this week, and we are putting together plans for getting it installed. It's, there's still a possibility we can do that this year, and I sincerely want to thank, thank them for helping. That is really going to save us some money. And, you know, and then their contribution, we have money for further projects. So, that's it for that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other unfinished business? We will then move on to the veto override of the resolution requesting a proposal from Greater Cincinnati Water Works for management of the City of Norwood's water system for six months. It was on last meeting's agenda, and you asked that it be put off till this meeting. Mr. Thompson?
I believe the reason that we put this off to this meeting was in the hopes that we could have everybody who had originally voted on this measure present in council to tackle this, and I think this might be the second or third time we've tried this. So, I would move we maybe table this until the next meeting, if possible.
So, you want to table this until the, what is this, November 12th meeting? Is there a second? Seeing none, the motion dies. Mrs. Hanahan?
I know they're having their meetings like next week, I believe. I would like to move that we just table this indefinitely.
Is there a second to that? Lack of a second, that motion dies. Mr. Bonzel, third time charm maybe.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I would encourage Councilmember Thompson to potentially make his motion again. I think that could be a better option, at least in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Thompson?
That thing that I said again.
So, your motion is to table until November the 2nd meeting?
No.
Is there a second to that? I'm sorry, November the 12th. And is there a second to that? Too many numbers. Mr. Bonzel, discussion. Mrs. Hanahan?
There is a possibility I will not be at that meeting. I guess we can table it then till another one.
Yeah, I think so.
You know.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The motion on the floor then is to table the veto override for consideration to November the 12th council meeting. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
My vote of six to nothing, the motion carries. All right, we'll move on to new business. Any new business? Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I did receive a letter from Councilwoman Stevenson on a resident, or someone who had been knocking door to door and read some things on Facebook about a rat problem in I have been working with MSD. They are willing to come out and bait the sewers. I have posted that on Facebook in several places and have got like four responses. I have, they've already, I've talked to them today, they're going to start going to those places immediately and start baiting. So, if there is a rat problem, you know, let me know, and MSD will come out and bait the sewers. Now, the one question they would have, and what, if anybody would contact me on that with either, go to my email or call me, the question is, is, are they storm drain, coming from the storm drains or the sewers? And that's a big question, because they will not bait the storm sewers. They're only going to bait, or the storm drains will only bait the sewers. So, if you do have a problem, I know how on Facebook sometimes one thing can turn into something really big with a lot of people, and I know I've actually had some, well, my neighbor had them, or I had them last year. What we're really trying to find out is where the big problems are, so we need all the addresses. So, even if your neighbor calls me, call me also, so that they know, you know, what places to target. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just want to go back to what Mrs. Hanahan was just sharing. So, I had not seen this post on Facebook, so should people, if they haven't seen it and they're just hearing this, should they just be contacting you?
Yeah, yes, if they would just to email me or call me. My email is mhanahan@norwoodohio.gov, and my phone number is on the website.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you. I just want to circle back to that one more time and make two, well, make one request and a comment. So, the request is, could you also share that directly with the members of council, so we can share that out? And then the second is just a point, should you make sure the information on how to utilize the program, whatever it is you posted, could you make sure that the members of council have that information?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Then my comment, I believe there were, I know I received an email from Danielle Black, and so, it was not something I personally noticed. I think that went to other residents, and I want to name that because there were residents who brought this to council's attention, and just want to say thank you for speaking up. I know I've had some conversations on the street here and there where people feel like we're not approachable, or we're not responding to issues that are very important to residents. So, I just wanted to say, keep speaking up if you're having a problem, because we would like to partner with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevenson. Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you to all the residents that came out on Saturday to the Wason Way tree planting. There were like 70 trees planted between the Phase 1 of Wason Way, which is on the other side of 71, and Phase 2, which is on our side of 71. So, there's, it's going to look really nice for the groundbreaking, or not the groundbreaking, excuse me, the ribbon cutting, which is happening in November. So, just want to thank everybody that participated in that, everybody that had a role in organizing it, and then also, I know, like, there's so many people that helped donate, like Sunbelt Rentals, Sam Martinez on Elsmere, they helped to organize, donated some, basically some equipment and some man-hours to help like drill, pre-drill holes and do a bunch of other stuff, too. So, it really made the process really easy. So, I do think, one of the kind of things that's really cool about all this is that Wason Way, Madam President, is they see that, they see the participation from the Norwood residents and everything happening, and there's a lot of excitement about that. So, I just want to say thank you to all of our citizens for representing our city so well, and for all of the trees that got planted on Saturday.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Since you brought up Wason Way, I was going to report this out a little bit later, but as you know, I'm your representative on the Ohio Kentucky Indiana Regional Council of Governments, and at our last meeting, we approved about $64 million of federal monies for projects in fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '24. Part of that money from Ohio, out of the Surface Transportation Block Grant funds and congestion mitigation and air quality funds, awarded $6 million to Wason Way to finish some of the other, the other phases of that project. So, very cool, was happy to vote on that, and Kentucky got some additional funding as well. So, I have the breakdown of the projects, if any of you are interested in how that $64 million will be spread out, so just add that on to the success of Wason Way. Thank you, Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, yeah.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to let everybody know what was going on with our new police cars. We'll start with the first one. I had heard that they were, they had very few cars in service one week. I was talking on the phone with Ms. Lake. She went one way for information, I went the other, and she discovered that they had the opportunity to buy a very low mile used police car. And so, we made calls. I checked with Mr. Bonzel, who said they had, you know, that there were funds in the drug fund. That's what they offered to do, is pay for the car out of their drug funds. I checked with Mr. Bonzel, they said, he said they had it, and worked with the police department, Chief Kramer, and as of September 11th, they got the car. It's beautiful, and it's been in service since that time. So, they have another car, which is really good, because the two we ordered that we're supposed to be in at the end of September, there's been a recall on the transmission.
Lovely.
So, we don't know, one's right now being dressed, and we don't know if that's going to have to go back to the manufacturer or what. The other one never got delivered. So, it could be a little while before those cars are in, but it appears that, I mean, we are going to probably in the next month have three new cars on the, on the road. So, that's some good news.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank Mrs. Hanahan for the work on that, especially with the used car, because there was a little bit of arm wringing that had to happen with certain people to make sure that it got approved. So, thankfully, it did, and her persistence on it was helpful, very helpful on that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam President. Earlier this year, Board One began having community council meetings and has been continuing. This month, October 24th, will be our last meeting of the year. We won't meet in November and December due to the holiday season. This week, at 7:00 PM, we're going to be meeting at UDF Corporate Headquarters. We're going to meet by the mustache. The meeting's just from 7:00 to 8:00, but their team will be present, not only to talk about some of their key business initiatives, but to also let us have some ice cream. So, if you've never come out to a Board One Community Council meeting, I really encourage you to come, bring a neighbor, even if you don't live in Board One, but you know someone who does, or you're thinking about moving to Board One. It's a great way to do what we all know is possible here in Norwood, which is get to know your neighbor and find out who is that person across the hall, or across the street, or however you think about neighboring. So, this will be our last one of the year, and it should be a really fun time.
And the time?
7:00 to 8:00 PM. When I say the red mustache, sorry, it's actually, the front entrance is 4001 Montgomery Road. The mustache is, I think, on William, so if you've gone past the plant, it's the other side of the street.
It's the old cruisy hardware building?
I have not been around that long, but I'm going to take your word for it.
And it's, if you have not been in there, you will be amazed at how beautiful it is. So, it is, they have done a really fabulous job of redoing that building. Thank you. Any other new business? You, I'm sorry, Mr. Sankar?
I don't know whether you're going to mention it or not, but the Gemma Highlands 5K run on November the 2nd, 9:00, starts over on the corner of Floro and Smith. There's still time to register online, and the last list of various sponsors and vendors that are going to be in attendance there was pretty appealing, so I'm sure they would like to see have a big turnout to show those people's support as well. And the funds from, that are raised from this have gone to great things being done here within the city. here within the city. So encourage everybody to get out and hopefully the weather will be
A little warmer this year.
A little warmer than last year. So thanks. November the 2nd, 9 o'clock.
And isn't there a spruce up before the, do you?
Cleanup.
The Saturday before?
Saturday before.
Which is October 26th? Where are we meet, where do you meet to do the cleanup?
Same place.
Same place? And the time?
Eight.
Eight AM? Okay. Thank you. Another thing that I represent you on is the ESID, the Energy Special Improvement District. We have had a, that is the committee that meets, that approves, or that looks at the PACE program, the PACE financing for businesses that allows businesses to make energy improvements to their company. And you can get financing through the state of Ohio and it, the financing does not count against your debt, if you will, for the business. It is a special assessment that you can put onto your tax bill. And each one of those things comes to council for approve, for approval. The state of Ohio has now adopted a residential PACE program that will allow residents to do the same thing. So that if residents can, need to do things like replace an HVAC system with a more energy-efficient unit, if you do roofing that might be more energy-efficient, windows, doors, anything like that, that will improve energy efficiency in your home. This program was started out in California and Missouri and it's now in place in Florida and in Ohio in January. The Toledo Port Authority is the governing body, if you will, for the state of Ohio. So think of it as a shared services agreement, basically. The Toledo Port Authority is going to be approving, approving or not approving any of the applications. Even people that have apartment buildings, if it's three units or less, they could still qualify for this. So the ESID met today, we approved that program as the district, but the final approval of that is the legislative authority. So it will be coming to you for approval. I have asked them to not do that until the end of November. So then it gives time for the law department to review the documents, which I did take to the law department today. It's really an exciting program. There are seven or eight, or maybe eight or nine other communities in Ohio that have adopted this. So it will allow residents to take advantage of the same. So if your windows and your HVAC system maybe, or the roof maybe have a life of 20 years, you would be able to pay for that over the life expectancy of those energy improvements and it would be a special assessment on your tax bill. So just want to give you the heads up on that. I have the documents and my notes and stuff on here. I will make sure that I make copies of that and have that available to you to review. But just wanted to give you the heads up that at our second meeting in November, somebody will be here to explain that and that will give the law department sufficient time to review those documents. So just really excited about a program that might be a benefit to Norwood residents, get the same opportunities that businesses do. So just to let you know about that. Is there any other new business? Okay, we'll move on to communications then. The first is from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, Donna's Carryout. My understanding is this would allow consumption on premises. And comments must be postmarked no later than October the 28th, so. What is your pleasure? Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. I sent a letter to Pam. And does anybody have it in their packet? Did I oppose this? Okay. And I do oppose it. There is, I gave everybody just a newspaper article about what happened a couple of years ago. It took years to get this business closed down. It's in a location where they have, they had, if you read it, drug activity, fights, thefts, DUIs, weapon charges, child endangering, sale of alcohol underage persons, 153 times in two years where the police runs. The residents I have talked to do not want to see that happen again. It is the same owners. And so I, as a, you know, councilperson in that ward, I do oppose this license.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanahan. Mr. Moore, just as a matter of procedure, if we, as, if this council as a body decides to oppose this, what is the manner in which we do that?
Council would basically make a motion to object, to file an objection, and it would be sent up to the Division of Liquor Control and they would schedule a hearing on whether the transfer should be allowed or not. And the law department would go up and present reasons as to why. And I suppose the reasons would be if these are the same, I'm not sure if this, honestly, I don't know if it's the same corporate, if the people behind the, this particular LLC are the same owners. If that's the case, then there's, you know, good grounds to say, listen, they couldn't be trusted before the county came in and had the place closed as a nuisance until they got rid of the liquor license portion of it. That would be the basis of the hearing. If it's different owners, then that would be a slightly harder case to make. But that's, that's basically the process.
So just a simple motion?
Yeah, just a motion to object, correct.
Thank you. Mrs. Hanahan.
Thank you, Madam President. President. Everything I could find it is still the same owners. So I would like to make a motion to object to this transfer of license.
Is there a second, seconded by Mr. Clark? Call the roll, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson?
Is there any way we can confirm that it's, I mean, I'd hate to, to object to it without knowing for certain.
If you had a hint, the auditor said it's the same owner.
It's the same owner, okay.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Moore?
That's, that's really the question, is it, the building owner has not changed. I don't know if the owner of the liquor license has changed or not. That would be really the question. Who's running?
Well, I believe it says the owner is Donna's, Donna's Carryout. It's the same name.
Okay.
Which, and I'm just surprised that we haven't, have we gotten an objection from the police department? Do we know?
Don't know. I'm assuming this got sent out?
I will double check.
We'll double check. Any, Mr. Bonzel?
Yeah, I'll just say that our deadline's 10/28. So I think, I mean, they're not going to deny the permit if it's not, if the arguments that the city's making is not reasonable. So I mean, I don't have an issue with allowing, giving the city permission to object and the law department the ability to make those arguments because again, there's a pretty high bar, I would think, to, that we'll have to cross. And I'm fine giving them the chance to at least make the argument.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other discussion? Ms. Stevenson.
Thank you, Madam President. There was an email sent on October 10th from the Clerk of Council's office.
To all the various departments?
It looks like to all the various departments, yes.
Any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to file an objection to the, to the transfer of this license. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
A vote of six to nothing, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding mayor's court fines for September 2019.
Dear Madam President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of September 2019. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Move to receive and file the report.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next is a letter from Tim Maloney regarding bank reconciliations.
Dear council members attached, please find the bank reconciliations for August and September 2019. Sincerely, Tim Maloney, Treasurer.
Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Move the, the report be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Finally, is a letter from Mayor Williams regarding executive session.
Dear Madam President and members of council, I write to ask that council consider holding an executive session at its regularly scheduled meeting Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019, as permitted by Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. If you have any questions regarding this matter, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Thomas F. Williams, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Sankar?
Madam President, I'd recommend that we go into executive session, as stated in the letter here, to prepare for, conduct, or review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment. I would also recommend that Mr. Gears, Clerk of Council, Mr. Moore, Ms. Lake, all the council members, Mr. Gears, the mayor, and any of the bargaining people without doing bargaining on behalf of the administration be present in that executive session as well.
Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Stevenson. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Sankar?
Yes, sir.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We will move into executive session, so we ask those in attendance, if you can, leave the room at this time. We will come back into regular session once executive session ends. And ask that those who were stated remain in the room for the executive session. Could we please turn off the audio and visual portion of the community television? community television?
Okay, want to bring us out of executive session and call us back into regular session? We do have one absent member. Mr. Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Ms. Stevenson?
Do we need to roll call out of executive session?
I just said we came out of executive session.
But we do not need to roll call?
Did we amend our minutes?
I think we did, to roll call out.
All right. We have come out of our executive session by ourselves. I guess we will have a roll call to officially come out of executive session. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bonzal.
Present.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
We're not here...
Yes.
Voting to come out of executive session.
Oh, your roll call.
To end executive session. Go ahead.
Continue or restart?
Continue.
Start over. Right.
I would like to amend my vote.
The motion on the floor is to come out of executive session. Call the roll.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Here, yes.
A member's present voting aye. We are out of executive session and back in regular session. We do have one absent member, Mr. Bonzal.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move that we excuse the absent member.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
A member's present voting aye, the motion carries. Ms. Stevenson.
I move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Clark. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
A member's present voting aye, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.